We're ready. Good evening, everyone. We're so sorry. We're starting a few minutes late tonight. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Homewood City Council. This is a special called council meeting for May the 19th, 2025. Apologize it's a little late, but we did have all of our committee meetings tonight. I'd like to start with the invocation by Mr. Segrist and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this evening. Lord, we just ask that you lead and guide us. God, continue to look and watch out over our city, watch over our employees, our residents, and everybody that's here present tonight. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to serve this city, and we ask you be with us for the next few minutes. In your heavenly name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Face of light, attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Jones, can I go run, cut something off of my computer and send that to me?
You may. You may. And we will just wait on him because we can't call roll without him. So, we will... It's been one of those evenings.
While we're waiting, there's a new shift. May be a problem.
We resolved it.
My apologies.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we resolved the location. Yes, sorry.
All right. Mr. Segrist, if you could call roll, please. Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Counselor Walden.
Here.
Gear.
Here.
Alamon.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Brandt.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Nelms.
Here.
Andrus.
Here.
Harden. And President Jones.
I'm here. So, we have 10 strong. We have the reading of the minutes from last week, May the 12th. Do we have a motion to dispense with the reading and approve them as distributed?
So moved.
Okay, I believe I've heard Counselor Smith and Counselor Alamon second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, by the same sign. That passes 10 to 0. The only question I had with board vacancies is Ward 4 abatement board closed today. And, Mr. Segrist, we didn't have any...
Sir.
Okay. What would Ward 4 like to do? Okay, so, without objection, we will open that until June 23rd?
Yeah, I think that's...
At 4:30. Okay, so, without objection. Okay, and then, just to provide some reminders, the opening for Ward 2 Park Board closes on June the 9th. Ward 4 Park Board closes on the 9th. Ward 3 Library Board, that closes on the 9th. Ward 2 Beautification Board on the 9th, and Ward 3 Beautification Board on the 9th. So, we have lots of openings, and I'm sure people are going ahead and sending us their resume right now, as we speak. Okay. So, obviously, there are going to be some additions to the agenda. So, let me just sit back, relax. I'm gonna read these off to you. So, yeah, just a few. So, we're gonna start off with 010525. Wait, I'm sorry. Let me start. I did not look at the right one here. Okay. The first one will be 090525. Request for consideration of installation of right turn lane at the north end of Cobb Street at intersection of Oxmore. Counselor Wolverton, Randy Hamblin. That's gonna go to the consent agenda. 020425. Request for consideration of mid-year budget review. That's gonna go to consent. And then, these are all gonna go to old other... It's gonna go to old business. 010525. Request to schedule a bid date for the Homewood Library Interior Finishes Phase 3. 020525. Request authorize the city manager to sign a contract to replace a pool liner due to creek wall failure at 711 Broadway. 030525. Request for consideration of a budget amendment for line item transfer, coming to us from Cale Smith. 040525. Request permission to authorize city manager to sign a contract with EDT Incorporated for Survey Services at 1830 29th Avenue South. 050525. Request for consideration of budget amendments for FY 2425, coming to us from our city manager. 060525. Request for consideration of mid-year budget increase for the Homewood Environmental Commission, coming to us from Counselor Wolverton. 070525. Request for consideration of business license penalty waivers, coming to us from Mr. Segrist. 080525. Request for consideration to declare surplus the property at 1811 29th Avenue South, coming as to from the mayor. That will go to consent. I apologize, I did not talk about that one in the beginning. So, 080525 will go to consent. 130525. Request for consideration of line item transfers, coming to us from Berkeley Squires. 350525. Request for consideration to install traffic calming system on the western end of Oxmore Road near North Moore and Oak Moore Drive. Counselors Wolverton and Alamon. 100525, and here come the fun ones. Request for consideration of an amended development plan for property at 800 Lake Shore Drive. This is the Sanford University's proposed Bulldog District to permit the construction of two separate residential villages. 090425. Public hearing set for June 9th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. for consideration rezone 1601 Parkview Lane and 600 and 601 University Park Place. This is a mixed use comprising Sanford University's proposed Creekside District West. Wait, am I going too far?
Those are not on the agenda.
10... 10... Okay, we haven't gotten... Okay, I'm still going. 100425. This will be public hearing set, consideration of final development plan for property at 1601 Parkview Lane and 600 and 601 University Park Place, to include diverse mix of commercial, retail, dining, and entertainment uses, hospitality, conferencing facilities, some residential housing, and other improvements. 110425. Public hearing set, June 9th, 6:00 p.m. for consideration to rezone. That's what I'm asking. These are not already on the agenda, are they?
No, they're not.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure.
Well, no, they are. They were sent to the public hearing.
They want it published.
Yeah, they are, but I'll just report out if the recommendation that came out of the committees.
Yeah.
Got it.
They're already on it for them. They were sent.
Okay. All of those are on there. Okay. So, that's... Okay, so, those are already part of the agenda. So, we will, when we get to those, we'll report them out. Okay. I think that's everything that needs to be added. Oh, there's one more.
Cale Smith, 210525.
210525. Sorry about that. Request permission... So, this is under other new business or old business. No, this would be other new business. Okay, I'm sorry. This will be committee referral going to finance. Request permission for resolution supporting Safe Streets for All Implementation Grant to be submitted by Jefferson County to, coming to us from Cale Smith. That's going to finance.
One last thing, President. 100525, request for the plan for property at 800, that was the Bulldog, we said, public hearing.
He did...
Oh, he did. He said...
Yeah.
Yeah, he added that one. Right before...
Okay. All right. Any other additions?
Counselor Jones, just for clarification to you, related to 090525, right turn lane at Cobb, which is slated for the consent agenda.
Yes.
Is there a corresponding item that also sends that to finance through committee referral?
Oh, that's a really good point. That's a good point. We do need to add... We do need to add that to the referral agenda to going to finance. And that would be... Would that be 220525?
Yes, sir.
So, let's add 220525. Request for funding of right turn... No, I'm sorry. Speed.
Right turn lane.
Right turn lane. On Cobb Street. Okay.
That's request for funding for a survey.
For a survey, yeah. That's right. Do we have a motion to approve the...
To approve the amended agenda, yes.
Okay, Counselor Wolverton.
Second.
Okay, and second by Counselor Smith. Any questions? Thanks for bringing that up. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. Okay. The consent agenda, as I mentioned, is comprised of three items, 090525, 020425, and 080525.
Need to approve.
Okay.
Second.
All right. Moved by Counselor Smith. Seconded by Counselor Wolverton. Any questions on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. Okay. Please let me know if we're... If we go astray here. We're gonna try to get through this as quickly as we can. Okay, starting off with 380425. Public hearing set for June the 9th at 6:00 p.m. for consideration of sign variance at 2822 Central Avenue, Suite A, coming to us from Jared Lewis, Central Avenue Holdings. This is carried over for the public hearing set for June the 9th. So, without objection. Oh, was there a request to drop?
For the sign variance, yes.
Need to drop.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. That was Counselor Andrus, move to drop. Counselor Alamon seconded that.
Counselor Wolverton.
That was one quick question.
He could give it to you.
Okay. Yes, question?
Question. Have we advertised the public hearing yet?
No.
No, we did not.
Perfect, okay.
We did not. We called it in time. That's right. Thank you for that. Okay, you heard the motion to drop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0 to drop. Okay. Okay. 090425. Public hearing is set for June the 9th at 6:00 p.m. for consideration. I've already read this. 1601 Parkview Lane, 600, 601 University Park Place. Could we have a motion from Planning and Development?
I do not have any. Do you need a... I believe that this was... Yeah, we sent it out tonight, and I believe that the motion was made from Counselor Nelms and seconded from Counselor Sims, and it passed 5 to 0. Just said that without recommendation. For all four. For all four.
For all four of them. It's 5 to 0 tonight?
5 to 0, and it was Nelms with the motion and Sims with the second, I believe. Did I have it backwards?
I believe the actual motion was... I made the motion. It was seconded by Counselor Wolverton.
That's correct.
Oh.
That's correct.
I thought it was me and Gwaltney. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
It doesn't matter.
I'm just making stuff up at this point. Okay. So, that motion came from Counselor Sims, and the second came from Counselor Wolverton. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay. You heard the motion, and this is for 090425, 100425, 110425, and 120425. The recommendation is to send out without recommendation pending the public hearing. So, we're gonna carry this over. No, let's have... Let's see. I guess... And then, the public hearing will be set June 9th at 6:00 p.m. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 10 to 0 for that public hearing to be set. So, we're... We have moved now to 130425. Public hearing set for June the 9th at 6:00 p.m. to amend Article 4 of the zoning ordinance of City of Homewood to revise and update Section Z, Section GG relating to permitted uses in PMUD, coming to us from Cale Smith. This is also carried over to the public hearing on June... Guess when? June the 9th. Yes, exactly. Okay, now, we get to some of these... Some of the finance items. 010525. Request to schedule a bid date for the Homewood Library Interior Finishes Phase 3, coming to us from Cale Smith. Report from Finance, Ms. Smith.
Yes, the committee met, voted 4 to 0, recommend setting the bid date for June 10th at 3:00 p.m. Bids to be opened at 3:01. The motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Gwaltney.
All right. You heard the report from Finance. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. We have that bid date set. 020525. Request to authorize the city manager to sign a contract to replace pool liner due to creek wall failure at 711 Broadway, coming to us from Cale Smith. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving this. Motion was made by Mr. Gwaltney, seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 25-81. 030525. Request for consideration of a budget amendment for line item transfer, coming to us from Cale Smith and Glenn Adams. If we could have a report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes. This... Sorry. This is in relation to the survey done on the property in... Over in Rosedale, and we voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving this line item transfer to cover that. Motion was made by Mr. Brandt and seconded by Mr. Gwaltney.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions on this? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 2582. 040525. Request permission to authorize city manager to sign a contract with EDT Incorporated for Survey Services at 1811 29th Avenue South, coming to us from Cale Smith. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, this is a contract to be signed for some survey work, and the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving it. Motion made by Mr. Brandt, seconded by Mr. Gwaltney.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I think that was 10 to 0. That was... That passes Resolution 2583. 050525. Request for consideration of budget amendments for FY 2425, coming to us from our city manager. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, this is an item to just clean up some accounting and some locations of money, and the committee voted 4 to 0, recommend approving the line item transfers. Motion made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Gwaltney.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 2584. 060525. Request for consideration of mid-year budget increase for the Homewood Environmental Commission to, coming to us from Counselor Wolverton. A report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, this item is related to some additional expenses incurred for their tree giveaway, the commission's tree giveaways, and some bags that they use for that tree giveaway. So, we voted 3 to 1 to recommend approval. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon and seconded by Mr. Brandt, and Mr. Gwaltney was the one may vote.
Okay. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes 10 to 0. That passes... That's Resolution 25-85. 070525. Request for consideration of business license penalty waivers, coming to us from Mr. Segrist. A report from Finance. Are these...
These are...
One of...
I think they're one resolution, but they were...
They're all separate.
They're separate, okay. Oh, that's true. That's true. Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, let's take... Let's take one at a time.
I'll do the first one. Yes, okay. I have them that way, anyway. So, yeah.
Okay.
So, we had three different people come to us for penalty waivers for their business licenses. The first was for Blow Hair Bar, and the committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving, waiving the penalties and the interest for business license penalties for Blow Homewood, and that the invoice for the past due licenses from 2020 would need to be paid within 30 days. The motion was made by Counselor Alamon and seconded by Mr. Brandt. And actually, that was not 4 to 0. That was 3 to 1, because I voted against it.
Oh, okay. So, let's take it. Take that one first.
Yes, that was it. Yeah.
Out of committee, 3 to 1?
Yes.
Are there any questions? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Actually, no.
No. Okay.
Yeah, I voted no.
All right, so, that'd be 8 to 2. That's Resolution 2586. Okay, and can you do the next one?
Okay. The second one was for Constantine International Food, which is Najee's Pita Gourmet Pita Cafe. The committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving, waiving the penalties for a delinquent business licenses just for this year, and they've already paid their business license, so that 30 days doesn't make a difference.
Okay.
Are you missing something? Which one do you have next? Oh, okay, okay. I just... In my order. Okay, we did him last. So, I had her. I had the Constantine, but I can do that one right now. Okay. I just have them in the order that I have them on my sheet. The committee voted in the case of Robimons, the committee voted 0 to 4 to waive the penalty, so we did not approve that waiver. Motion was made by Mr. Alamon, seconded by Mr. Gwaltney, and again, that was denied 0 to 4.
Okay. So, the Robimons... So, the recommendation from Finance is 0 to 4 to approve that business penalty waiver. Questions on that one? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Say aye. Nay. Okay. All right, can we... Let's have roll call votes. Let's have a roll call vote.
Yeah, sorry. I got... We got out of order there.
I'm requesting Mr. Segrist with a... We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, an a would be that you are approving the penalty waiver. If you... If you're a nay, then you do not.
Because we have to make a motion in the positive.
It's in the... The motion's in a positive.
Yes.
A yes, is you approve of it? A no? Yeah, it was 0 to 4.
It was 0 to 4. None of us voted for it.
You gotta deny the application. They've asked you to approve it. You have to either approve or deny.
And can I ask one more question about that?
Sure.
So, this was just for... This is just... It was over $2,000, and it's one year. Is that correct?
Yes, but they had... They had been late last year.
I heard that part.
But yes, this one is for the penalty for this year, because they waived it.
And how much were they late? Like, they haven't paid yet, or... Like, was it a month late, or?
They paid... They paid their business licenses late. They just... When they submitted it, they did not remit the penalty, and we billed them for what they were late, for what the penalty would have been for being late.
And do you know how late they were?
I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Basically, they were billed...
It was past April 1st, and so, it's a 30% penalty. So, they paid sometime after the 30% penalty was instituted.
Okay. If you'll call roll, please, for the motion.
Sure.
Counselor Gwaltney.
No.
Gear.
No.
Alamon.
No.
Wolverton. Sims.
No.
Brandt.
No.
Smith.
No.
Nelms.
No.
Andrus.
No.
Harden. He's out, sorry. No. And then, President Jones. No. 0 to 10. So, that fails. Okay, so, let's do the last one for Najee's.
Yes, and that was, again, Constantine International Food, Najee Pita Cafe, voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving this waiver. They were late on their... Just for their 2025 license. They've already paid for the fee. They just haven't paid the waiver, and the motion was made to approve the waiver by Mr. Brandt and seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Okay. So, the motion was...
To approve the waiver.
To approve 3 to 1.
Yes, 4 to 0.
4 to 1, okay. You heard the motion. Are there other questions on this? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So, that passes 9 to 1, and that's Resolution 25-87. Is there anything else we didn't do correctly, Mr. Kendrick?
Is that 42789?
Yes, that is the amount, yes. 42789.
And who was the nay on that?
Jennifer.
Counselor Andrus.
Andrus.
Okay. Moving on. 130525. Request for consideration of line item transfers, coming to us from Mr. Squires. Report from Finance, Counselor Smith.
Yes, we heard from Mr. Squires. These are related to some vehicle maintenance and fuel costs. Committee voted 4 to 0 to recommend approving the line item transfers. Motion made by Mr. Brandt, seconded by Mr. Alamon.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. That's Resolution 2588. 350425. Request to consider installation of traffic calming system on the western end of Oxmore Road near North Moore Drive and Oak Moore Drive, coming to us from Counselors Wolverton and Alamon. A motion from Public Safety, Mr. Gwaltney.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The committee met and carried the item over in committee, but agreed to set the public hearing for July 14th. The motion was made by Counselor Nelms... I'm sorry, by Counselor Wolverton and seconded by Counselor Nelms.
Okay. You heard the motion from Public Safety to set the public hearing for July 14th at 6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., yes, sir.
Any questions? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. We'll have the public hearing then. 1005... 100525. Request for consideration of an amended development plan for property at 800 Lake Shore Drive for Sanford University's proposed Bulldog District to permit the construction of two separate villages, coming to us from Cale Smith. A report from Planning and Development, Ms. Andrus.
I'm so sorry.
I believe... Is this the one that was set for?
Yeah, we set the public hearing for June the 23rd. But I have no idea who made the motion or the second report. I'm sorry. I know... I know both got...
Sorry.
No, it's not your...
I didn't get you your...
Listen, we were up against it, so...
It was somebody on the committee.
Yeah.
Somebody else on the committee.
And we approved it 5 to 0. I know that. And it's still on the agenda to be discussed in committee.
It was Counselor Nelms and me.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. Hang on.
Counselor Nelms and Gwaltney.
Okay.
Approve 5 to 0.
Okay, so, the motion is to set the public hearing for June 23rd.
June 23rd, yeah.
At 6:00 p.m.
Yeah.
Okay. Without objection, we're gonna set that public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that's fully approved. Okay, committee referral.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay. That was Counselor Gwaltney and Counselor Alamon, who seconded that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 10 to 0. That passes. Other new business. 200525. Request for consideration of approval of vouchers for period April 29th through May the 19th. I know Mr. Gwaltney has been very busy with this, so, do you have a report for us?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I reviewed the vouchers today. I did not see anything that raised questions, although there are quite a few. I would make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay, and seconded by Counselor Smith. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes 10 to 0. Resolution 25-89. We did it.
We did.
No more questions.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith.
Somehow, I think we missed oh nine, oh five, twenty-five. I didn't give a report, so I'm assuming we missed it.
Oh, no.
We set the public hearing.
Yeah, it was on the consent agenda.
So I don't have to give a report. Perfect, excellent.
Yep. You were ready, though, you were ready.
And we sent it, we sent it to Finance.
Mayor.
So, first of all, great job, everyone, tonight. These are always impossible where we do committees and council on the same night, and especially with the committees we had, and the issues we had tonight, and you still got done by seven-ten, even though we went about thirty minutes late with committees, so good job. So we have identified an issue with our polling places?
Possible issue.
Possible issue.
I'm of the opinion that the polling places have to be in each district. I wanna check that.
Okay.
Verify, but I think I'm right.
Okay, so the rec center is not in new Ward Two, is the issue. And so if Mr. Kendrick confirms this, then that can't be a polling site for the August election. I have already spoken with Dr. Hefner, that's what I was doing back there, and delayed everything, and he has said if we, if Mr. Kendrick is correct, and the rec center cannot serve as a polling site for Ward Two, that the Board of Education can. So that will be the fallback position, but.
We have to amend the three resolutions and one ordinance we've already adopted.
And we would need to do that?
You have to do it this week.
This week.
So we need to have a special.
So you need to at least schedule tonight?
Yes.
A specially called meeting, Mr. Kendrick will be able to identify.
Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday.
You have to give a twenty-four hour notice, so send it in the morning, we could have a Wednesday night approach.
And it will be quick, because it will either, i-if it has to happen, all it will be is simply approving the Board of Education, yeah.
I just want to verify it before I have to come back.
Sure.
Would that be a permanent change?
It'd be a change, it'd be changed.
Yeah, until it's changed later. Now, the general, just so everyone understands, the general election has more polling spaces in Homewood that deal with different districts, and we have not set those yet, so those, part of this, this is just municipal.
Sure.
But it would stay that way unless the, a future council changed it.
Would anyone have an objection to, like, noon on Wednesday or Thursday, or do we need to have it at five?
I can't have it at noon on Wednesday.
That can't do in the middle of the day.
Five?
If you do it at five, yeah.
On one of those days? Okay, let me know if.
Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Thursday.
Mayor?
No problem, and I will, I will not be here for that meeting, so if anyone needs me, call me, but I'll be out of town.
Okay.
Excuse me, I should, yeah, y'all should.
Well, we'll need your signature eventually. Okay, okay, Counselor Gwaltney?
Can I confirm, we are setting that for Thursday at five P.M.? Is that correct?
If needed, yes.
If needed, just making sure, I thought we had to set a date, is what he said, okay. Thursday, five P.M. I will set Public Safety immediately following Finance, and it's been a pleasure being here with all of you tonight. That's it.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Gear?
I really don't have any announcements, but I would like to let everybody know that our two new Arts Council members attended the meeting last week, and one of them volunteered to be our treasurer, which was much needed, so thanks, everybody, and that's it. See you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Counselor Gear, Counselor Alamon.
It's been a pleasure to be with you up here, and we only have like twelve more of these for the year, it's kind of crazy, but that's it, reflecting on the time that's left.
Right. Counselor Wolverton?
I just want to point out that we had a lot to cover tonight, and barring anything, in the next two minutes, we will be done about forty-five minutes faster than we had that meeting a couple weeks ago. So, but that's it, I'm gonna set, actually, yes, we carried over, yeah, so we'll, we'll set Public Works after Public Safety. That's it.
Okay, great. Counselor Sims?
Yes, good evening. For starters, I would just like to congratulate all of the counselors and the mayor who had college graduates recently. I believe, Mayor had Ander graduate from Xavier, correct? And Zoe graduated from Northeastern, and Hardy from Rhodes, so three college graduates, and also.
And Sarah from Belmont.
We've had some high school graduates.
Yeah, Winston.
Counselor Jones had Winston graduate, and my son Charlie from Homewood High School had the pleasure this past weekend, Friday night was awards night, graduation on Saturday, and I just want to say, sitting through those events, it's just been incredible to see the love our community has for its school system, and the way our school system, our administrators, our faculty, and everybody just embraces our students and our youth. And you, you heard it throughout all this talks, and it was just really incredible, and it definitely is one of those moments where you just love being a part of this community times ten. I mean, your heart's gotta be big, being at those things, and I want to thank you all for making that happen, and I also want to say that thirty-two million was the number that this senior class, yeah, had, had received in scholarships, and of that, thirteen million is actually accepted by students to further their education, so thank you all for being a part of this amazing community, and congrats to all of you parents who had graduates recently.
Great, great, great message. Counselor Brown?
All right, real quickly, let's be remiss if we didn't think about what this future upcoming weekend's about, Memorial Day weekend, want to, you know, thank all our fallen soldiers, sailors, airmen, and women, everybody that served our country for Memorial Day, that's the real meaning of the off day Monday. And on a lighter note, the Homewood Band is still trying to raise money for the Rose Bowl Parade. There has been a last minute, two minute a pig cooking of pork butts, which are delicious. Order them before Thursday at five, and it goes for a good cause, and they taste really good, too.
They need a special call meeting, too, yeah. All right, Counselor Smith?
Set Finance for five, and yes, we, we did have graduation on Saturday, and lots of activities surrounding that, and it was, it was really fun to be there, and Hardy is off to the alma mater of Ms. Andrus to do graduate school at UT Austin, so we're very proud of him, and just, yes, UT Austin.
That's right.
And I'm just excited for everybody who got to have those celebrations this weekend, it was, it was fun. That's it for me.
Thank you for that. Counselor Gear?
Sure.
Her name's Nelms.
I mean, Nelms.